I wasn't so much that, but you know. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried. The next item of the minutes of the regular meeting, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. We adopt the minutes as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried. Under the appointments this evening, the first four, if you'll put those on our next agenda, please, Mr. Phillips and Councilmember Geon, under youth activities.
Yes, I would like to nominate Anne Sheerheart.
Motion is second. We nominate Anne Sheerheart for a three-year term on the Youth Activities Commission. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried. Under the appointments this evening, the first four, if you'll put those on our next agenda, please, Mr. Phillips and Councilmember Geon, under youth activities.
Yes, I would like to nominate Anne Sheerheart.
Motion is second. We nominate Anne Sheerheart for a three-year term on the Youth Activities Commission. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried. Thank you. Mr. Phillips, do you have anything this evening?
I do not, Mr. Mayor.
I do not have anything this evening. We're under new business now. The first item, Mr. Stevenson has a public hearing. This is a request by owner to demolish two eighty-two Greenville Street. I'm going to open a public hearing on this issue at this time. Mr. Stevenson, how are you this evening?
Fine, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Before you is the public hearing request for the demolition of two eighty-two Greenville Street. It is built more than fifty years ago and is not located in a historical district. And there's a representative of the owner here if you wish to question them about it.
Any questions of the owner of two eighty-two Greenville Street? Nothing from council. This is a public hearing on the demolition permit that's before the council on two eighty-two Greenville Street. Is there anyone in attendance who would like to speak to the issue? This is your opportunity to come forward. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time and ask for a motion on the issue.
And a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. We grant the request for the demolition product, demolition permit at two eighty-two Greenville Street. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
Mr. Mayor, can we go back up to introduce the kids?
I'm sorry. Yes, we can. We have a very special group of people, not that you all aren't very special, but we have some high school students that are here tonight who need to be recognized, and Ms. Jenkins is going to do that for us. Thank you.
Thank you. We have with us, as we do at most of our meetings, members of the Noonan Youth Council who are fulfilling their requirement to come to a city council meeting and then go back to their peers and tell them what happened. So we have with us tonight Liliana Maxfield, senior, East Coweta High. Will you please stand? We have Isabella Rodriguez, senior, who is also the historian from East Coweta High School, Lacey Johnson, a sophomore from Heritage School, Ashlyn Johnson, Jones, sorry, Ashlyn Jones, a sophomore, Noonan High, Sarah Parkley, sophomore, Noonan, Madison Peter, sophomore, East Coweta, and Adele Balfour, a junior, who is also the Noonan High School rep from, of course, Noonan High. Thank you all so much for coming tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for being here and thank you for your service on the council. The next item on the agenda this evening, Mr. Kramer, consideration for a contract for C.J. Smith, the slide slope repair.
Yes, sir, Mayor Brady. Members of the council, as you recall, the C.J. Smith Redevelopment Project concluded in the summer of twenty twenty-one and has been opened with great fanfare since. You know, with that fanfare comes increased uses. Along the two long slides, tens of feet of slide, we've seen some erosion issues develop over time. And so we've charged city staff with the work of some consultants to try and find a remedy to that because we wanted to allow young people to continue using those slides. After great research and looking at a number of alternatives, what we're presenting to you is a treatment using shopcrete, which is typically used in swimming pool construction, but it's a device by which concrete or mortar is kind of pushed onto a vertical structure to kind of hold that side in place. And if approved thereafter, once it's adhered and cured, a rubber material would be placed onto it. So this would allow for two things. One, to stop the erosion that's occurring around these two large slides, and two, allow for individuals that are in the park to traverse it or climb up it and be on it safely. For conversation's sake, we looked at removing the slides. That's always one alternative, but we didn't want to do that. We felt like children that are using them in the park would like to keep those slides. We looked at installing softscape improvements or plants, trees. On a slope at an incline like that, it's not likely that they would stay or would take and grow. We looked at artificial turf. Again, that doesn't work well. As you know, most artificial turfs lay kind of in a horizontal pattern and are weighted down with the little black beads that sit in it right at a time in which they're in a horizontal, those little black beads no longer can weigh down that artificial turf. So not a good alternative. And so what I'm going through is, you know, we didn't by happenstance come to the treatment we're recommending today. It's in there, it's in your budget. We've secured a quote and there's a contractor ready to go using Sourcewell, which is a cooperative procurement group we use from time to time, and I'm prepared to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, Mr. Kramer? Is there a motion? Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second. We approve as presented the contract for C.J. Smith, the slide slope repairs. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried.
I do have one question.
Thank you.
Speaking of slides, I sent an email about repairs at Lynch Park. That slide is in bad condition.
Yeah, that particular issue was turned over to Mr. Ferguson and his crew, and I think the playground equipment has been ordered. As a matter of fact, I thought they were going to actually close the slide off, but I had not been out there.
Okay.
I will certainly double check that tomorrow, though.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Kramer, you're still up with the consideration of contract award for design services for the preservation and improvement of the Farmer Street Cemetery.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Brady. Members of the council, as I get this going, I'm going to ask one of my colleagues, a volunteer service member of the commission, Jocelyn Palmer, to join me. She may have added input or can answer questions about how we got here today.
Ms. Palmer, how are you?
I'm doing very well, thank you.
The Noonan City Council, a few years ago, more specifically in twenty twenty, reconstituted the Farmer Street Cemetery Commission and charged them with doing work to protect, promote, and preserve the Farmer Street Cemetery. We're here today at another launching point, actually an excitingly important point whereby we're hoping with the blessing of this body that the commission can engage Pond and Company to come in and do some early design work, which includes meeting with members of the community to potentially inform, design improvements. And what I'm getting at is how do you treat that space? Do you erect a fence, do you not? Do you put signage, do you not? Do you put lights, do you not? How do you? But we're at the point now, we've studied it, we think we know what we have there about as conclusively as we can get with current modern technology. Now we want to get into hiring a firm that can help us design the improvements and protection of and preservation of it moving forward. So I don't know if Ms. Palmer wants to add anything to that, but they interviewed, the commission interviewed Pond and Company, it was a couple of weeks ago now, and are recommending that we engage them for an amount, as it's stated in your packet, not to exceed fifty three thousand four hundred. This would kind of be a phase one of the project. This would not involve construction documents. This would involve community meetings, design schematics, and if the community, this body, agree with the Farmer Street Cemetery Commission's input around some schematics, we'd likely come back and ask to continue down that road to develop construction documents, if in fact the prescription is to construct something. It may not be, but.
Had the opportunity to interface with a couple of the groups that the Pond and Company will be using as consultants, and I was very favorably impressed at their depth of academic knowledge, expertise, and actual work that they had done in these areas for other municipalities. I think they're highly qualified to do it, and we're very excited to do it, and as Hasko said, in a phased manner so that we know what we're getting and will be satisfied with them before we go too far down the rabbit hole. But I think we're going to be really thrilled with what they're going to bring to the table, and I think they have a real understanding of what we have here in Noonan and how important it is to protect and preserve it.
Any questions of Mr. Kramer or Ms. Palmer?
Just a quick question. Ms. Palmer, did the commission look at anybody else besides Pond?
No, we did not. We put out the RFP and they did answer it. We did not receive any results from any other groups, but that also provided us with the opportunity to look at these people in a fair amount of depth, and we were very pleased with what we saw.
Okay, thank you.
One other thing, Hasko did assure us, because we asked the question, we're very conscious of spending the taxpayers' dollars carefully and thoughtfully, and Hasko assured us that the services that they are going to provide, certainly at this phase, are well within reasonable limits of what you would expect to spend.
And it is, and we appreciate your service, your hard work, and the other members of the commission. We appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
And Mr. Kramer's guidance on this. If there are no other questions, I'll ask for a motion.
I do have one.
Well, I have another question.
Okay. And you can get a proper second on that, just so we're in the discussion phase.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, motion is second, that we approve. Is that correct, Mr. Boles?
Yes.
Question.
How long would this process take then? When should we expect something from them if they move forward?
If you go to page forty-two in your packet, it talks.
Six weeks of initial site visit, but is that, you know, the?
That's them coming out and doing some kind of walking survey work. There's going to be some community meetings thereafter, design concepts drawn, brought back to the community for confirmation, validation. So it's going to be several months.
Okay, because the six to eight months is construction documents permitting to take place over six to eight months.
That's right.
But that's not part of this, so that's why I'm asking.
Yep. I mean, it's going to be three months, four months, something in that neighborhood.
All right.
Because of the same thing, we're like about almost a year.
Right, and so that's, that's why it was like, that's not part of this phase. That's why I want to know this phase.
How many total phases are we looking at potentially, ballpark?
Likely two. I mean, two to three, depends on how you cut them up, right? We can, we can cut the phases in that, you know, right now what we're doing is we're trying to get community input, design schematics done, validated, agreed upon. Once that's done, if it's agreed upon, then those schematics turn into construction documents. Somebody has to draw what's going to be built. Once that's completed, that could be a phase, and you're going to put it out to construction. You're going to, you know, we're going to solicit for bids, and we're going to hire a contractor, the contractor, she or he is going to go out and construct it, then after we're going to have to maintain it. I mean, so this is, depends on how you slice it and dice it, but this is the initial stage of developing an improvement schedule, something that could be constructed if, in fact, that's what is decided upon by the community and you guys.
But that is also sustainable. That's the key to everything we're doing. Okay, I have a motion is second. Any other question or comment? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kramer, and Ms. Palmer, thank you very much. Mr. Norton, it looks like you're up for the next three items. The first is consideration of a contract extension for debris removal services.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The, the contract that we're asking to extend was put in place after the tornado that we had in twenty twenty-one. Was it a twenty-one, I believe? And we put a five-year clause in the RFP so we can have those services available on a moment's notice, given if they're needed. So that's what that is.
All right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. We approve as presented. Any discussion?
Just as a quick question, there's no cost to this, it's just having them on standby?
That is correct. There's, there's no cost unless we activate it, and then the costs are actually in the contract already negotiated.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? I'll call the question. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried. Consideration of contract extension for debris monitoring, disaster recovery, and emergency planning services.
That's, that's kind of on the same scale that was procured during the March twenty-one tornado as well, and this is, has to do with processes that FEMA, if it was a FEMA-eligible reimbursed storm, that we would have to go through.
All right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We approve as presented. Discussion?
Same, same question about the cost, it's just on standby.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried. The next is a consideration of contract extension for consulting services for disaster recovery and FEMA public assistance.
Yes, so that is the same type of stuff that with the actual documents that FEMA require, that would be the reporting, and there's no cost unless we activate it.
Thank you.
Very good.
Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
And a second, and we've already taken care of Mr. Kretko. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Okay, the next, Mr. Phillips, proposal to repair and maintain erosion at fifty-seven East.
Absolutely. Been driven by the side, and I'll ask the bench, you know, so we have some erosion issues, and as we continue through our programming phase, I think it's been proven responsible of this organization, this jurisdiction, to actually, you know, make some repairs to the erosion control. So what I've done is I've, I've actually asked Eric Johnson, our program manager, and he worked with New South, the construction manager, and went and got, developed a scope and went and received bids from three different companies to actually make the repairs. The reason we've asked New South as a construction manager so that it can be under their liability insurance and their supervision. So they proposed doing the construction management at the cost of seventy-five hundred dollars. The seventy-five hundred dollars is within the total proposal of one hundred and one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. So it'd be my recommendation that we contract with New South and the work will be done by Southeastern Site Work in a total budget of one hundred and one and eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Any questions, Mr. Phillips?
I have a question, and not so much related to the bid price or anything, but we briefly discussed prior to the meeting, the possibility, really, could we possibly use any of that area for public parking as we work our way through what we're going to do with fifty-seven East in the interim period?
I think one thing that we really got to do is get, get the site stabilized. I mean, obviously, I think we want to offer it to public parking until it's in
Right, right.
shape for public parking, proper access, et cetera. I think we can get through with the stabilization. I think for event parking, for example, with the Rock and Road Festival coming up on April the fifteenth, I've already spoken with Cuida County, but not putting public parking in the facility, but in order to open up the county parking lot, we want to move the county vehicles into fifty-seven East, which will then open up their improved parking lot.
Sure.
I do think there are ways to use it, but I think until it gets, you know,
Right, right.
stabilized and where it's safe, I don't think it's something that we could consider. If you look down closer to the railroad tracks, we have some erosion in some areas, it's probably three to four foot deep.
Right, absolutely, yeah.
I think.
Yeah, in the future, somewhere down the road.
Depending on what this body decides long-term, you know, maybe you get opportunity for some parking, especially event parking.
Sure.
Maybe, maybe in the meantime, grass is, everybody can play.
Grass requires a lot of topsoil.
I know, and it's pretty rough out there.
Motion, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is, is there a second?
Second.
Motion of second, we approve as presented. The repair and maintain erosion at 57 East. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Those like sign, motion carried. Under unfinished business, the first is a public hearing for 31 Jones Street. This is a resolution to repair or demolish. This is a public hearing for 31 Jones Street.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. This property was presented to you information only in January, and it's one of the few properties left in the storm damaged properties that unfortunately haven't been able to make much progress towards repair or demolition. We sent a notice to the owners along with a number of other storm damaged properties back in November of '21, and asked them to contact the building department, let us know what their plans were for the property. We did hear back from Ms. Allen, Ms. Sheila Allen, in early '22, and she indicated to us at that time that they were trying to find assistance to help with repairs of the property, and we were trying to give them some time to see if anything would move forward, but unfortunately, nothing really did, and the property continued to deteriorate and was left unsecured. So we decided to move forward with a, with a hearing. When we sent the notice out, I did hear back from Mr. Montgomery, and I believe the family's here tonight, and he indicated that they would. I asked him to secure the property and they did do that. The property is in very bad condition. The porch roof is gone, the roof is compromised, the interior floors and walls are collapsing, so the house is in very bad condition. We certainly feel that the, it's greater than 50% of, excuse me, assessed value to repair the property. The taxes have been paid in our current on the, on the property. We're asking, we're asking council for a 45-day resolution to repair or demolish the structure, and I believe, like I said, the family did want to address you about some plans that, what they have with the properties.
Okay, this is, if you'll come forward and state your name for the record, please.
Good evening. This is Mr. Montgomery.
Good evening.
Hello, how are you all?
We're, we're doing well.
Good.
And want to thank you all for this opportunity, and, and as the gentleman said, we recently was brought up to speed where we are. We're just asking for, because we are in the process of securing the resources needed to make the determination whether we're going to move forward with demolition. Our family has worked hard to, to purchase the, the land, and so we want to make sure that we're utilizing all of our resources and just trying to bring, bring us together. So we're, so 45 days, can you give me a little bit more background terms?
Much time do you think you might need, other than the 45 days? Be generous with yourself.
Thank you. To be honest, because we, we've started the cleaning up process. Again, some of us are new coming to the table, trying to, you know, be brought up to speed. At least 90 days.
Okay.
Or 120. This is, all right. Yes.
Thank you, we appreciate it. I appreciate that input, 120.
And again, we're, we're traveling down unfamiliar territory.
Right.
And, and again, we want to make sure that we have adequate enough time to make the right decision.
Okay. Is there anyone else here this evening that would like to speak to the issue of a resolution to repair or demolish on 31 Jones Street? Okay, since there are no other people here that would like to speak on this issue, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time, and having heard from one of the owners that they are requesting 120-day period.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion of second, Mr. General. What question?
I would like, yeah, I'm all favor of the 120 days, but perhaps at maybe 90-day mark, we could get maybe an update, perhaps?
I was going to suggest our standard for that, Mr. Murray, is what, a 30-day mark that we're getting?
Well, 45, I think it's kind of the, kind of the.
45?
You know, the bottom line. So, yeah, I could provide an update of 45.
Okay, all right.
All right, that'd be great, thank you.
I've got a question. You said something about you trying to assess, what are y'all trying to look at? I mean, I didn't fully understand, you looking at rebuilding it or?
Well, that was one of the process, because we got in touch with the housing authorities.
The, the hope was to rebuild the house, but again, we're not, that's not our area. They'll determine whether or not the house is rebuildable.
Okay.
We have made contact with some support agencies.
That's fine, I understand.
Yeah.
Ma'am, I'm, I'm sorry. No, no, I, I want to hear what you have to say, but if you'll come forward, the sound system will pick you up from your seat, and if you'll identify yourself, please. Thank you.
Also, we are working with the.
Ma'am, if you'll identify yourself, please.
Sheila Allen.
All right, Ms. Allen, thank you for being here.
And I was born and raised at that resident, too.
That's important.
So we trying to keep our mother property today, but we are also working with the housing authorities, Sandra Schroger, too.
Right.
That's all I wanted to throw in there.
Okay.
So we working on this, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so do I have a motion of second on the 120?
You already have.
Okay, motion of second on the 120. Any other discussion or comments?
I have a question. As part of this, and I'm just looking at the pictures here, could you at least maintain the yard and, you know, whack that down so it's, you know, at least that part is kept up? Thank you.
And it does appear that the house is now secure, is that correct, Mr. Murray?
Yes, sir, it is. I would appreciate that.
The house will continue to need to be secured during this process, so if you come in and out. All right, any other questions? Have a motion of second for 120-day resolution on the property at 31 Jones.
I think the, all the other additional information is I think that the housing authority had looked at, what was it, ARCA funds? Was that on that ARCA funds list?
Yes, it was off.
All right.
So.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Those like sign, motion carried. Thank you for being here. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next is a recommendation regarding the public sale of 66 First Avenue and 10 Buchanan Street. Mr. Phillips?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Council, this is a follow-up from two weeks ago when we initially requested the council consider these two lots and surplus. So we'll give you a little bit more background data on each of the particular properties, starting with 66 First Avenue. Obviously, the lot is about a 60-foot wide lot, part of the tax information, and if you go back to OCGA, state statute, it's very clear that if you have a buildable lot, that we have to actually, you know, sell the property via a public, either a public auction or a sealed bid. There is a provision in the statute that if you potentially have a lot remnant or potentially an unbuiltable lot, then there is a process to where you can offer the property to the adjoining property owners. In this particular case, we know that there are certain encroachments from driveways, there may be some encroachments for some other properties. So for staff to be able to 100% confidently tell you whether it's a buildable lot or a non-buildable lot, it'd be my suggestion that we, we get it surveyed. There was a survey that was performed, I remember the date of the survey.
In the 80s.
In the 80s, which showed the driveway encroachment, but I don't want to rely upon 40-year data. I'd like to, I'd like to get that lot surveyed, so we'll know exactly which direction that we should be going on that particular lot. 10 Buchanan, or the standpipe or the water tank lot, whatever it's referred to, we know for a doubt, it's an unbuiltable lot. It's a non-performing lot, doesn't have any street frontage, it does have alley frontage, but if you, if you look at the built environment with the alley, the alley's not accessible. There's a lot of structures and fences and trees and everything in the alley, so it's certainly an unbuiltable lot, and we could certainly provoke that particular OCGA provision to offer it to the adjoining property owners. If you take a look at the attachment inside of your agenda, you will see that there are technically two adjoining property owners. You have an adjoining property owner that comes off of Buchanan, and you have another adjoining property owner that, that comes off of La Grange Street. There is potentially, and this is a decision the council would make, it was offered to adjoining property owners, there is a third property owner who does not technically abut, but has historically been utilizing the piece of property. You see in my particular report, I said if we were to allow that particular property owner to be involved in the bidding process, it would be my recommendation if that person were to be the highest bidder, that she be given time that she must complete a quiet title action of that portion of the alley that would technically give her access to the lot. There has been quiet title actions on portions of this alley in the past few years, and the city has taken the position not to object to those quiet title actions, because there was no benefit or value for the city to maintain ownership of the alley. So therefore, that is my report and recommendation, Mayor Council.
I have a question. Are there any structures, utility structures on those properties?
It's a piece of a, of an outbuilding on the path that's the stand where the pipe was, because I built it.
Mr. Rogers?
What year was that?
On that property?
It encroaches on that property, I promise you it does.
Okay, well, I'm just making sure that we've got a clear piece of property, that we're not going to come back someday and somebody say, hey, that's the city's pipe or that's whatever.
That's the reason for the survey for 66.
Okay.
The, the actual outbuilding that Mr. Shell is speaking to, I've actually been, I haven't actually went, it's actually inside of the alley. It's not constructed inside of the lot where the water tank or the standpipe lot was, it's actually.
We're about to find out, though, right, with the survey?
Well, it was a problem at closing slightly, but it was not, it was not significant to the value of the property when I sold it.
So recap 66 First Avenue. You're wanting, you're wanting a direction, a motion from the council to get a survey?
I want to give you the definitive mechanism to sell the property. I need to find out, you know, what encroachments we have on the property to determine whether it's a buildable lot or a non-buildable lot, because based upon how, what we determine, will dictate how we sell the property.
Okay.
If it is a buildable lot, the only two options this body will have is either to remove it and not surplus it and keep it, or sell it via sealed bids or public auction. Those would be your two options if it's a buildable lot. You cannot offer it to adjoining property owners.
If it's built.
By the statute, it's a buildable lot.
That's right. Is there a motion to grant the request of staff to get a survey?
Make that motion.
Second. 66 First Avenue, motion of second. Any discussion on this? Everybody understands that's just our next step on 66. Sir, did you have a comment?
Yes, sir, I didn't ask to be heard on this topic.
You'll, you'll need to come forward and state your name for the record, please.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Ben Minter. I'm an attorney with the firm Taylor English Duma. I am a county attorney for counties in southwest Georgia. I'm here today on behalf of Ms. Debbie Vines, who resides at 68 First Avenue. So her property, you just heard, she joins 66 First Avenue, she has the longest border with that. She's the east to west, the property that's directly south of 66 First Avenue, and she's also the property owner that arguably is separated from that tower lot by an alleyway. And I'm here today just to really distress her position and, and to convey her desire to be able to auction or to participate in an auction for either one of these properties, but particularly as to 10 Buchanan Street. And I was here, I just walked the properties before the meeting today, and I can attest, it really is, it's just the old base of a tower is all that it really is. It's very tough to tell what the alleyway actually is, I think, when I spoke with the city attorney before, today, or excuse me, earlier before this meeting, I think, not to put words in his mouth, that he said it might have been an old alleyway used for carriageways back in the 19th century. My client, Ms. Vines, has maintained both of these properties, the alleyway and the tower lot, ever since she's been a resident, which is approximately 13 years. I believe the prior owner of her property did as well. She planted the juniper bushes all around the, the tower. When they died, she planted new bushes, I forget which, azaleas, azaleas that have now replaced those. But to the extent, she understands that she will eventually need to file a quiet title action as to that alleyway. I'm not certain that the city has ever affirmatively claimed ownership of the alleyway, but we understand a quiet title would be necessary. We just, I'm just here on her behalf so that you understand, and hopefully would let her, as Mr. Phillips recommended, be able to participate in an auction for both properties. I think it's, as a matter of law, she would be able to as to 66, but especially for 10 Buchanan Street, because otherwise, she might have to file a quiet title and a restraining order to try and stop the sale in order to be able to participate, and that's all moot if she can just participate in the sale originally.
We appreciate you being here this evening. Thank you very much. Okay, so we have a motion and a second granting the city manager's request to get a survey for 66 First Avenue. Are there any other questions on this issue? I'll call the question. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Those like sign. Considering, I mean, in my mind, I want to see what that, I mean, clearly we've got two separate items here, but, Mr. Phillips?
Yeah, I don't think there's anything really for us to do on 10 Buchanan. We know it's an unbuiltable lot. It's just, do you want the two to go together at the same time? If so, we would not proceed with 10 Buchanan until we get the information back on 66.
That's the point I was going to make. That's the way I, I feel that, too.
It's all in one deal.
Right.
Or looking at.
Well, they would be handled, potentially.
We can handle it, but look at it as one big piece and make, because it.
That's correct.
At that point in time, you also need to advise staff as to whether or not you did prefer the sealed bid or the public auction.
That's correct.
Other step that you would have to.
That's correct. So there's no action needed on 10 Buchanan, if that's the request of council?
I have a question. Do we, do we need, or does it make any sense to have to do a survey on 10 Buchanan also or the alleyway, just so we can delineate, know for certain what is, what isn't?
Well, I think it is on record, a pretty good plot of where the 10 is located. Now, what I might suggest, and I was going to suggest to Mr. Phillips, is that portion of the alleyway that is directly behind the remainder of 66, that was not set aside in the prior act, also be outlined as exactly where it is, based on that prior survey that you already have of that back line, and then, and that might influence, too. What, what has happened with the city and the tank lot was that the tank lot was acquired in the late 1800s, and a standpipe was put there, and there were pipes that were running from that standpipe. At some point, the people using from 10 Buchanan, that drive area, the city bought 66 First Avenue. In my understanding, was rerouted the pipe up to the standpipe, but then at some point in the, they quit using the standpipe, but it was through 66, that lot was how they accessed the tank. So the city was using that part of the alley. So that would be my recommendation, at least that part of the alley be included as a subject.
And Mr. Phillips nods in agreement. Okay, so there's no other action needed on this particular item as we move on. Thank you. The next item, Ms. Donovan, there's a report on annexation and development planning. This is an action item requested at the city council 2022 retreat, but there's no action on this item required this evening.
That's correct. All I'm doing is bringing you some information. We went out, as you requested, and researched possible annexation plans and agreements from other jurisdictions, and we also came up with some examples of different housing tools that they also use. We put together some maps and so forth that have been included, including, as you see up on the screen, some vacant residential land that we have left in the city that's over 10 acres. We have some, Megan, if you'll go to that next slide. This is a map here showing you where the different types of residential uses are located, and then, if you'll go to the next one. We also provided some interesting demographic information on owner and renter occupancy percentages, which kind of was surprising to me, that we're actually, since 1960, this is the most percentage-wise that we've had of owner occupied since 1960, which I thought was pretty interesting. And then we also compared it to other jurisdictions, which, Megan, if you'll go to the next slide, that's in the area, as well as some that are on the interstate. But again, this is just information we brought you all at your request from the retreat, and we're happy to provide anything else as you go forward with this process.
Any questions, Mr. Duncan?
I had a quick question, and I addressed this earlier with Mr. Phillips. I was just looking at the two maps with the land use, and I just want to make sure that they're current, because I was looking at the property, like the one that we annexed fairly recently down on Parks, it wasn't listed as a, it's not listed as either vacant residential or vacant residential approved plan. And then also the other map, I'm just looking at some properties I know driving by, like it didn't list the assisted living over on Summerland and Lower Fayetteville behind the Kroger, so I just want to make sure that we're actually looking at real data here.
No, we're looking, the one on Parks Avenue is actually being built, so if it's actually being built, it's not going to be shown on this. When we say vacant with approved plans, that could be the one like out near Hospital Road, which is the Whitlock property, where there is actually a plan to it, but there's nothing coming out of the ground yet. So, yes, these are up-to-date maps, it may not show the one on Lower Fayetteville Road yet, or it's been shown, but aside from that, they're up to date.
And the one with the subdivision use is up to date? That's the one I was addressing with, with the, like, assisted living one on Summerland and Lower Fayetteville. I think it's Watercrest, or it used to be, I don't know what it's called now.
Oh, Watercrest Facility.
Because that's not listed on there.
It should be in there, he may have just missed that one there, but we should have had ones, the projects that are in, you'll see some that's on a steelwood and so forth that he had in the system, so.
Okay.
We can add that one in, though.
I just want to make sure that we're leaning, looking at good data here.
We are, we took this off our mapping and off our current projects maps is what he was using.
Thank you.
I'd just like to comment, Tracy, you did a great job on putting this information together. A lot of, a lot of work and time went into it, but it's very thorough, thank you.
Thank you. My staff was a big help with this.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? No action needed here, we appreciate it very much, thank you.
When are we going to take this up again?
Retreat.
Retreat.
Okay.
That's when we plan to put it back on agenda. So, the next item on the agenda this evening, on the next page, ordinances to amend the charter of the City of Noonan for co-ordinances for the purpose of redistricting. You have an amended, in front of you, handout, this is an amended ordinance. Mr. Sears, there were a couple of typos, I guess, or errors that were called, and so this is, this is the amended ordinance that you have before you, it's not the one that's in your agenda. This is a second and final reading on an ordinance to amend the charter of the City of Noonan for the purpose of redistricting, and I'll entertain a motion on that. So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Let me just have a moment, just to kind of, just to look at it. Thank you. Looks good, thank you.
Alright.
Appreciate your hard work getting that together.
Do you have a motion and a second, any other discussion or questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Those like sign. The next is a consideration of ordinance to amend the code of ordinances, Chapter 2, administration for purpose of redistricting. Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, we adopt as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Those like sign, motion carried. Under visitors, we have, the first item is a request to close Fresh Brew Drive, it has been removed from the agenda this evening. The second item has been changed from a request from explorer Noonan Calwita and the Noonan Calwita Chamber of Commerce to use the trolley on April the 11th, because the trolley is out of commission and will not be back into commission on April the 11th, to a discussion about the use of the trolley. I believe Ms. Daniel is here this evening. Did she, did Phillips, my understanding, we're going to have a discussion about that? Is that led by you or Ms. Daniel?
Yeah, obviously, there's no action to be taken tonight, but I think, you know, the fact that the trolley unfortunately has engine issues, and it's not going to be available for this particular event, but I know there has been some conversations, Ms. Daniels, myself, and other ENCI board members, about potential relationship, partnership, about trolley bookings in the future for special events. I know that we recently were excited to make some changes to the trolley route, because our ridership was not very good in the existing route, but I still think there's further conversations that we can have as a tourism-related event or special events, and kind of like to get council's initial feedback, see if there's interest in continuing those conversations. Again, there's nothing here tonight for consideration, but if there's some interest in that relationship, we'd totally like to do one or more on a later date.
I would personally like to, for you guys to explore it, absolutely, I think it'd be a great tool for all parties.
I agree. We just need to put a proposal together and get it in front of us for, take a look at. I think, I think the ridership has declined to the point where it could be used more advantageously in the future, so. As Mr. Phillips said, no action item here, and so that ends, that ends our regular agenda, but we do have a need for an executive session for legal. Mayor Procham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we now enter into closed sessions allowed by OCGA Section 50, Tac 14, Tac 4, pursuant to advice by the city attorney for the purpose of discussing legal, and that we in open session adopt a resolution authorizing direct the mayor or presiding officer to execute an affidavit in clients with OCGA Section 50, Tac 14, Tac 4, and that this body ratified the action of the council taken in closed session and confirmed that the subject matters of the closed sessions were within exceptions permitted by the open meetings law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Those like sign. Thank you for being here, ladies and gentlemen, we're in executive session.